Now I'm calling this Board of Selectmen meeting to order on Wednesday, February 17th, 2021. Jay, I've made you a co-host for this meeting. If you could watch the waiting room for the next several minutes, I'd appreciate that. So before we get started, as we've started our meetings for the last 11 months, I will read a statement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the governor's March 15th, July 2nd, and December 23rd orders imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. And DPH's designation of red for the Town of Adams, this meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public has been permitted. And every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Attending remotely this evening are members of the Board of Selectmen, myself, Christine Hoyt, John Duval, and Joe Novak, who is attending by phone. From the, from Town Hall, we have Town Administrator Jay Green, Town Clerk Haley Mezwar, DPW Director Robert Tober, Administrative Assistant to the Town Administrator Deb Dunlap, and Attorney Ed St. John III. Also in attendance this evening, we have Jack Arino from I Berkshires. And we have our friends from Northern Berkshire Community Television who are helping to broadcast this evening's meeting to help the public be part of our process this night, tonight. So as I mentioned, we have posted today's agenda in accordance with open meeting law. We included the call-in information for tonight's meeting. And despite our best efforts, if we're not able to provide for real-time access for the public to participate in today's meeting, a recording can be made available upon request as this meeting is being recorded by both Northern Berkshire Community Television and using the Zoom platform. As we are participating remotely, please note that all, that all votes taken by the Board of Selectmen will be done by a roll call vote. I will state the member's name and ask for their vote for each vote necessary today. I will ask for people to mute themselves if they are not speaking, just so that it'll be less background noise that we're hearing. And I think with all of that, the housekeeping piece of the meeting is done and we can move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. So I do ask that you all please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the
of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So we'll go on to approval of minutes. Before us, we do have the minutes from the January 20th and January 27th meeting. And it is my understanding that all members of the board are able to vote on the minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 20th and January 27th, 2021, and waive the reading of the minutes.
I have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. That brings us to public comment. Is there anybody on the call who wishes to speak to the Board of Selectmen this evening? Hearing none and seeing no hands raised, I will go ahead and close public comment. And we'll move on to new business. First item under new business is the 2021 Town of Adams Election Calendar. And we have with us this evening Town Clerk Haley Mezwar to talk to us about the election calendar.
Great. Thank you. It's hard to believe that spring will be right around the corner and our next election will be May 3rd. It's hard to imagine since we're going to get snow again tomorrow and then maybe again on Friday, but you know, it's time to get working on our election calendar. Nomination papers became available on January 25th. The deadline for all candidates to submit their nomination papers to the Town Clerk's office is Monday, March 15th at 5:00 PM. And the deadline to register to vote for the town election will be April 13th at 8:00 PM. We have quite a few number of positions that will be on the ballot this year. Our moderator for a one-year, Town Clerk, three years, two selectmen seats for three years, an assessor seat for three years, a Board of Health member for three years, two library trustees, Parks Commission, four positions available in that one, Planning Board Cemetery Commission, Housing Authority, Redevelopment Authority, and of course, our, both of our school districts. Along with multiple precinct members, we'll be looking for, we have openings, there's always 10 openings regardless in each precinct, but we do have some other ones to fill in that are two and one-year positions also. All of this information can certainly be found on the town website. If you go to the town website, you can click on Town Clerk and it'll bring you right to the election calendar. Thank you, Christine, for putting that up on the screen. So there's multiple positions. We are asking though, since Town Hall is closed to the public, that if you are interested in taking out any nomination papers for any one of these offices, to please call our office and schedule a time where we can have your nomination papers available for you. And we can meet you at the door and go over exactly what you need to do. We'll give you the election calendar, your nomination papers, and of course, your campaign finance. So again, we just ask that you call our office so that we can schedule a time. We do have postings on all four doors at Town Hall that say this. So our number is there in case you don't happen to know it, but certainly any questions about any one of these positions, please give our office a call. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Joe, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you Haley. I appreciate that. That information is easy to find under the Elections and Voting section of the Town Clerk's page. And you'll find the election positions that are on the ballot as well as the election calendar that Haley spoke of. I just couldn't pull it up fast enough while you were talking.
That's okay. I will be back before the board a few more times, just to remind people about the April 13th deadline to register to vote and talk a little bit about absentee voting also for the upcoming election, so.
And actually Haley, do you have a question about registering to vote? Is that something people can do online or do they have to do it in person with your office?
No, they can certainly go online. They can go on to the Secretary Galvin's website and you can just register to vote online at that website. And certainly if you're having a hard time, you can just give our office a call. We can always mail you out a form, but it's just as easy to do it online and a lot of people do it through the RMB too. So there's lots of ways that we can get you registered to vote.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Well, if there are no other questions, thank you very much Haley. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to the second item under new business, which is the application for zoning Board of Appeals. For the board's reference, member Mr. Duda, who was serving on the Zoning Board of Appeals, did move out of the area or moved out of town, making him ineligible to be on the Zoning Board of Appeals, creating a vacancy. And the, we did receive an application from Nat Karns. The letter states, Dear Select Board Members, I want to express my interest in being appointed to the Adams Zoning Board of Appeals. While only a recent resident of Adams, I've been in the Berkshires for over 25 years. My professional background includes several decades of land use planning experience as well as a professional degree in planning. I believe that my knowledge of the state's zoning enabling laws and a familiarity with the town and its zoning bylaws would help me provide value to the Town Zoning Board of Appeals. If you need to contact me, there's contact information listed on the letter, sincerely submitted by Nathaniel W. Karns. So as I mentioned, that there is a vacancy that was created by Mr. Duda's leaving. I do want to thank him for his service to the Town of Adams and serving on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I will also let the board know in talking with staff today about this appointment. There's currently an additional vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals as well as one additional anticipated vacancy. So there will still be two vacancies to fill in the coming months. But before us tonight, we do have this application. What is the board's pleasure?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Nathaniel Nat W. Karns to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Joe. Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, the town is very fortunate to have someone like Nat Karns interested in getting back, getting involved with the community and with his background and degree. And I've worked several years with him. He was the director of, I'll call it the Director of the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission for many years. He did a fantastic job in leading up that organization. So I think having him as a member of our zoning Board of Appeals is really, these are the type of people we need to really get interested in joining our boards. But anyways, but I appreciate him putting his name forward and I think Adams is the winner for this nomination.
Okay. Thank you. Joe, anything?
No.
Okay. With no further discussion, I'll call for a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And it is a yes from Christine. That is unanimous. We, we thank Nat for stepping forward and we'll let him know that he's been officially appointed and Haley, he needs to be sworn in, correct? Okay. So we will make sure he connects with your office to get sworn in before he has to serve in that capacity. And I just wanted to remind folks again, that, that we do currently have a vacancy that needs to be filled on the Zoning Board of Appeals and an anticipated vacancy. So there are two additional seats that are open and we hope that somebody watching this evening and following town government sees this and, and says, sign me up. I want to help out. So let us know and we'd love to appoint you. Okay. So we'll move on to the ratification of the DPW Administrative Assistant II position. And it looks like I have a letter here. There's a letter from Building Commissioner to the Town Administrator. And then I will read the letter from the Town Administrator to the Board of Selectmen with regard to this ratification. Dear Chairman Hoyt, this letter is to advise the Board of Selectmen that subject to the board's ratification as provided in Section 10 of the Town Charter, Michelle DeRose has been appointed to the position of Administrative Assistant II. It is anticipated that Ms. DeRose will be assigned to support the Department of Public Works and Inspection Services Department, including Parks Commission Cemetery Commission and Board of Health. Ms. DeRose has extensive administrative supervisory payroll and bookkeeping experience as well as well-honed customer service skills that make her the best qualified candidate for this important constituent interacting position. Pending ratification, she will assume her duties effective February 22nd, 2021, at the grade six, step four rate of $19.92 per hour upon successful completion of all hiring requirements. Respectfully submitted, J.R. Green, Town Administrator. Jay, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. This was Marilyn Colas's former position. Marilyn retired after, oh, I think Marilyn Haley was pushing about what, 30 years of, of service, I think with, with the town? So this is Marilyn's position. What we're trying to do, you may wonder why Jerry has his, has his name on this. It didn't come out very well in some of the communication, but we're, we, we took a moment to just pause and take a look and review the position. Do we need it full-time? Can we get away with it part-time? Et cetera. And I think what we're going to end up doing is, is we're going to bring Ms. DeRose in full-time. We're going to train her on DPW operations first. And then we're going to start to transition into inspectional services. So we're going to, we're going to try to combine and create some efficiency with the Administrative Assistant position there as some of the, the tasks, some of the, the mechanical aspects of the task overlap. In addition to that, Michelle has an extensive experience. She worked for Crane for approximately over 15 years. It was their loss when, when Crane had to close a little less than a year ago now, I think at this point. But she interviewed really well, so we look forward to getting her started and getting her up to speed. And I, I know I speak for Robert and Jerry that they're looking forward to having somebody that can help create some efficiencies. Take a look at our processes, see, see what we can do better and create some more efficiency for our municipal operations.
Thank you. What is the board's pleasure with this?
I'll make a motion to approve the ratification of Michelle DeRose to the position of DPW Administrative Assistant II.
I have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? John, anything?
Awesome. Sounds like a good, good hire.
Joe, anything?
Just a question or two. I always ask when we have a new hire. How many people applied for the position?
We had three or four total, Joe. We interviewed two.
Okay. And is Ms. DeRose from Adams?
Unfortunately, she is not from the mother town. She is part of the successive group known as North Adams.
Okay, just checking. That's all I have.
Sure.
Thanks, Joe. If there's no further discussion, it is a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine. So that is unanimous. Welcome aboard to Michelle, who starts with the Town of Adams next week. So excellent. So that brings us to the fourth item under new business of review and approve the modified Town Hall hours. As the board members on this call are aware, this decision to go to four-day work week was made by the Board of Selectmen in 2016. It has, I know for, for me, I, I know aside from the tax rate, this is the number one item that I am asked about is when is Town Hall going to go back to a five-day work week? When are you going to look at the work schedule? It seems to come up an awful lot when we have holidays that fall on Fridays. It comes up various parts of the year. This is something that the Board of Selectmen asked Jay to take a look at early on when he started. It kind of got sidetracked with a, you know, the global pandemic. But Jay wanted to bring this back in front of the Board of Selectmen to talk about some of the findings that he has. I know that he put some thoughts together earlier today and sent them to folks, but may not have been able to see them. So I'm going to turn things over to Jay at this point and to lead this discussion.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. As I want to apologize to the board for getting you that, just my thoughts and putting down on paper. I thought I sent it to you earlier, but I didn't. So I apologize for getting it to you later, but it's nothing that I can't verbally speak about. So I'm just going to, I'll go through this. Essentially, I'll, I'll read it because I felt as though this sums kind of everything up for you. Upon assuming my town administrator duties in 2019, the board did ask for me to take time and review the four-day work week for Town Hall offices to determine if it was an effective schedule for our community and our constituency. In doing so, I reviewed the relevant Board of Selectmen minutes discussing the reasons for considering a four-day work week. And this was done by the board in 2016. And that conversation centered around cost savings by not heating the building at least one day of the week and keeping public office hours later in the day for our working folks that, that need some later hours. There was also discussion that a four-day work schedule would help retain and recruit staff. It would allow certain staff who's required to work, uh, work evenings achieve a better work-life balance. Apparently, a six-month test schedule was run in 2016 and some of our staff at Town Hall they spoke with did confirm that this was done in keeping the building open to as late as 6:00 PM. The minutes show that there was little to no public use or demand for the office hours after 5:00 PM. And eventually after some discussion in several meetings of, of having the topic come back up for a thorough deliberation, a decision was made in late 2016 to adopt a four-day work week for Town Hall offices, 7:45 AM to 5:00 PM. That's what we've been operating on only for Town Hall. All other buildings, as you know, the library operates essentially on a six-day workday, you know, schedule as determined by the Board of Library Trustees. The Police Department is 24/7. The Administrator there is also, excuse me, the Administrative Assistant there is five days a week, as is the Police Chief. There's also the Council on Aging, which does operate five days a week. And there are a variety of different positions at Town Hall that actually continue to work five days a week. I do, which was a, a directive that the board gave me when I was hired. The DPW Director works five days a week because he supervises staff that works five days as well. And our Town Clerk is often in the office on Fridays occasionally as needed. Our treasurer is in the office on Fridays periodically as well. So that just gives you a quick snapshot as to what I have found in terms of how we work on a four-day work week. So during my time as administrator, I've made the following observations regarding that work week. Several department heads, all salary staff continue to work periodically on Fridays, resulting in the building still being heated or cooled at least in the morning hours. And I spoke with the Building Commissioner today. And he did tell me that we're required, because it's a public building, to keep the building at 68 degrees anyway. That is a requirement to have it occupied by staff. So because there is some staff who works there on Fridays, and not everyone's in the building every Friday, but we do keep it at that, that temperature. There's a disparate treatment in the application of holidays and other work rules between employees who are assigned to a Town Hall office versus those who are assigned to another office that works for, excuse me, five days, such as Council on Aging. Prime example that I, I can give the board for your perusal is, for example, this year, Christmas landed on a Saturday. So if you work in a five-day office with the municipal government, you receive your Christmas holiday on Friday. Because Town Hall is a four-day work week, those folks who work in the building receive Thursday as their Christmas holiday and have Thursday, Fridays, and the weekend off. And they also received a half-day Christmas Eve day. Now, most of those holidays are all governed by our collective bargaining agreements or state law. And we try to treat the non-union employees, which are mostly your salaried staff, equal to the, the collective bargaining covered staff. So you had folks treated differently in one building and then treated differently in another. And we worked through it, but I can certainly tell you that as much as you folks may get feedback from constituents with the building being open four days a week, I get feedback from staff saying, is this really a good way of doing things because we're treated differently? And again, that's just an observation as to how mechanically this works. The workload for certain positions, and I use the Code Enforcement Officer as an example here, has resulted in overtime costs on Fridays, notwithstanding the increased burden of the, the health pandemic. Now, I'm, I'm not telling you tonight that that's an exorbitant number or anything that we should be concerned with, but it is a factor that when you have a code enforcement officer such as Mark, who's very productive, or you have other positions who are hourly and they need to come in on Fridays with authorization to get some, some work done, that is an overtime cost. Now, in the code enforcement officer's position, I can tell you that the majority of that work right now is a result of the health pandemic. So we're able to charge that overtime to the CARES Act. But I can also tell you that prior to COVID, Mark was in periodically on Fridays, as is Jerry Garner periodically, simply just to catch up because we're the third largest community in the Berkshires and we're busy. And, and these folks are, are doing a good job, but I've noticed that sometimes a four-day work week for certain positions, not all the time, but certain weeks, they have to use Friday to catch up. I've also noticed that the Custodial and Facilities Department has not taken advantage of the building being closed to perform certain tasks such as painting. So for example, we're closed on Friday, but yet they can't ever seem to really catch up and do certain painting or, or do certain tasks that would be in the building while, while it's closed. And that's just a function of they have a lot of stuff going on, but it's, it's not anything we can't work around should the board decide to go back to at least some level of, of times on Friday. There was some discussion in 2016 about the productivity of staff working from 7:45 until 5:00. I can't honestly say that they're any more productive than they would be if the workday was 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. I can certainly tell you that some folks, and it's about 50/50, have said, you know, we prefer a, a 4:00 PM workday so that we can get out, you know, it's a long day when you think about 7:45 to, to 5:00. Open Meeting Law posting requirements actually come into play here. They result occasionally in having to set agendas almost a week in advance depending on holiday and meeting schedule. So a prime example was this past week where we had President's Day on a Monday. We have to post that agenda in advance. So we actually had to get the agenda done and posted on Thursday of last week in order to get it done in, in time because we didn't come in on, on Friday. So sometimes that catches us off guard and we have to scramble to put things together. Again, it's just a simple observation as to how mechanically this works. As I said, some of the, the feedback from the staff that I've, I've talked about, and as you can gather, it hasn't always been the most of pleasant conversations to talk about having people work an additional work week. But I would say it's about split 50/50. There's some people that prefer to have the four-day work week because they have all Friday off to get their own errands done during the week, et cetera. And alternatively, some people prefer to have a, a shorter workday where they are leaving the office around 4:00 PM. Salary staff who choose to work on Friday, and I can tell you that sometimes I'm included in this, in this group, we do find it productive in the building because it is a quiet environment. The phones are not ringing. People are not coming to the door. And, and I'm, I'm trying to use the non-COVID times as an example of, of this because that is our normal work environment. So there are some advantages to that. The health pandemic has shown that we're capable of operating effectively without any public office hours. I, I know that Madam Clerk will agree with me there that we're doing a pretty good job of, of, of trying to operate the building even without anybody in it. We haven't received a lot of negative feedback about that. We have our collection box out front. We're available to do things by phone, by email. And a lot of people, and I thank our constituency for this, they've adapted really, you know, well to that. Obviously, that's an anomaly. We're a municipal building. We're eventually at some point going to be open again to the public. That's, people have a right to access their, their government officials and, and we know that. But my point being is, is that we, we do effectively, you know, work well at this point without public office hours. Lastly, we, we took a snapshot at other municipalities with full-time operations. And the Berkshires, if they operate in a four-day work week, and there's only one other, I believe it's the Town of Dalton. And the majority of all municipal offices in the Berkshires, they either operate from an 8:00 to 4:30, 8:00 to 4:00 range, you know, give or take. So I took a look at this. That's some of the, the observations that, you know, I, I've made. If the board did want to consider, and there's no, I'll give you some guidance tonight in terms of what I think the more board may want to do. There's obviously no reason to make a decision tonight. Certainly dwell on this. We can certainly put it back on agenda for later. If we were to change them, what would I recommend changing them to? The first step that I would say is we need to align at a minimum Council on Aging with Town Hall municipal offices. We, we need to eliminate that disparity between treating the two buildings differently for a variety of reasons. So I would say that's the one thing that we have to do. Library, Talk with Director J. Co., you know, the library could certainly align themselves with some of those schedules if need be. But I think they're the best ones to dictate what they think their, their schedule should be, what, you know, they should serve their constituency at. So at this point, the police station is awfully close to what, what the proposal would be. Work with Chief Kelly on that, should the board decide to, to go forward with a, with a change. But really, at the end of the day, we, we, we should align Council on Aging in Town Hall offices. It's easier to advertise more reliability for folks to, to remember, oh yeah, they closed at a particular hour and it's not different. What I would recommend, I would say that Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, we would open at 8:00 AM even and we would close at 4:00 PM. On Wednesday, we would stay open until 5:00 PM to allow one more hour for folks to come in as we are now. So at least we restore that one day, excuse me, we maintain that one day at 5:00 PM. And then Friday, I recommend we simply do a half-day, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. What does this do? We address any constituent concerns about the building being closed on Fridays. We do maintain office hours under the schedule until 5:00 PM, one day a week. We do maintain office hours under the schedule until five P M, one day a week. We eliminate having to set the agendas almost a week out for the the periodic Monday holidays. We do eliminate any overtime on Fridays, at least for the four hours that we would be open for hourly staff. We eliminate overtime for custodial staff for disinfection purposes during the pandemic. So, for example. Uh, we purchased uh an organic based dry fogger system for all of our buildings, for the D P W vehicles. As well as for the police department. We use CARES Act money for that. Uh, however, y- you're still spraying something in an office, and it's not prudent to do that when people are in there. The custodial staff comes on duty at seven thirty. So we've had to bring them in at seven in order to dry fog the building and allow the material, which dries very rapidly. But still, for safety sake, we don't want to be spraying inside an occupied building. Uh, occupied office. So right now, CARES Act covers it. We do it, but this is not, CARES Act expires in December. It's not a sustainable model. So I I use that also as an example. We do eliminate the disparate treatment of staff who work in other buildings on a five day schedule versus the four. We do maintain a thirty-five hour work week. We still offer an attractive schedule for staff recruitment. Obviously, the private sector always pays more. Uh, that is not necessarily why people come into municipal service, but we still do offer an attractive schedule with a half a day year round on Fridays. And that was a conversation the board had in two thousand and sixteen about making it an attractive schedule by having Fridays off. And we do still have people that work on on evenings, et cetera. So this would be uh still something to attract people to come work for their municipal government. Uh, we could also develop a limited work at home policy for some salary positions. That are required to work evening meetings so that even though they may not be required to come into the building on Friday, uh, they'll start working from from home. Uh, that's been a lot of conversation about that in the human resources world, obviously, with the pandemic. But that's something we can certainly look at. We don't have one. Uh, I've done it occasionally with a few people on specific occasions for specific reasons. It's worked out well, but we can certainly develop a a permanent policy. Library will continue to operate on its own schedule, and it does align our municipal offices with with other communities. As I've said, the police and the council on aging do require some tweaking, but I think that if the board wanted to, this was something that we could do that would address some of the concerns that you folks have brought to me. Uh, and maintain some office hours on on Friday and and still maintain an attractive schedule for for the staff. So what could the board do? With this, the board may choose to just maintain current office hours for now, take no further action until a later time. It could maintain the current hours for now and simply revisit the issue next few months. Or it could simply recommend to me to take steps to implement the change with a target date to be determined based on how we can go about mechanically doing this. Uh, the uh collective bargaining agreement employees that would be affected by this are part of the clerical union. I spoke with labor attorney very briefly about the topic, not wanting to spend too too much time until I received some guidance from the board and how you wanted to proceed. Uh, but this probably will have to be impact bargain with the with the uh union about it. It's not an abnormal procedure. It happens anytime that we change things. Uh, and it would just be a conversation between ourselves and in the union in in terms of how we would go about doing it. There's provisions already I can tell the board in the labor agreement that allow for a reversion back to a five day work week. Uh, so that the employees could continue to accrue the time that they had under a five day work week. So there's provisions in it. I I don't think it would be anything drastic, but it would be somewhat time consuming to to do it. And it would just be a matter of sitting down with the the union and having that that conversation and see what they would want for for doing it. So that gives you. Uh, a snapshot. I I hope you recognize I I gave this a lot of thought, talked to a lot of folks about it. Um, and I simply just bring it forward tonight uh to know that we took a look at it. Here's my observations. And we're happy to discuss it. Um, move on in another time, whatever you you folks would prefer to do.
Thanks, Jay. Appreciate the um overview and uh your your outlook on this. Um, as I know you've spent a considerable amount of time collecting some information on it. Um, I can open it up to the board for any questions or any comments, any clarification you need from Jay. And John, I'll start with you.
Okay, um, back in two thousand and sixteen, I was on the board. My main focus was to be open later than five o'clock. Or four at the time possibly. Um, for those that work and do not get back into town until five, five thirty, six o'clock. And then settled on the five o'clock closing time after several discussions. And also the savings, we kept the town hall. It was awful cold on Fridays going into winter time. Uh, when I went in there, uh, but uh I understand that when people are working, needs to be at a certain heat uh level. So I, so I got that. So, and also we were told that we would say, not told, but we discussed. That there would be some savings, uh, not be, as Jay has indicated, that not being open on Friday, we would save um utility costs. And I've become wary of town administrators telling me we're going to save all kinds of money. No, no offense, Jay. But um, didn't seem to pan out. Uh, yes, definitely a, it's a good uh schedule for the staff. Four days a week, Fridays off every week. However, I think um. Because we do serve the community. Um, my opinion is going forward um is that we go to what Jay has, one of Jay's suggestions is. Um, maintain a thirty-five hour work week. And I, I'm sorry, it's a half a day Fridays. Uh, I lost the, uh, but anyways, um.
Yeah, you got it, John. It's eight, eight to four Monday. What I would recommend is eight to four, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. We stay open until five P M Wednesday. Uh, it it doesn't have to be Wednesday. We could do any any day of the week. I just figure on Wednesdays, we're generally meeting as a board. Here or we have a workshop or or something on Wednesday. You know, Kelly Rice suggested it be Thursday because the banks were open later. It could be either either way, but yeah, Friday would be eight to eight to twelve.
Right. So I support, I support that. It definitely helps me because I do have every other Friday off, and when we were going five days a week. I was able to come into town hall and to discuss. Discuss some things with uh with individuals that were working. They're on Fridays, every other Friday, so it did help me out to be able to. Um, better myself as a select board member, but now at Fridays, every Friday is closed, and that's the only opportunity I have to get into town hall. During the week, during the weekdays. So I really haven't had much interaction at all with the employees of the. Uh, of the town, um, because I work. I worked a minimum ten hour, nine hour days. Um, so I'm not able to, uh, you know, be able to interact with employees very much anymore. So I'm glad to have that, if that can happen, to have that come back and on Friday mornings, I'll be able to come in every other Friday morning, be able to. Um, have some discussions and and do some research and. So I I do support Jay that um you can look into that. Um, with the union and I like the uh working five days a week, half a day on Fridays would work best for me. And it's still, it's still a uh preferable work schedule for employees to have every Friday with a half day. I think it's still, it's still a a good option, so.
Thanks, John. Joe?
Yeah, just a few uh thoughts. Uh, first of all, when this was done in two thousand and sixteen. Um, I had a concern about perception with a three day weekend. And a lot of people approached me after we made the decision to close on Fridays. Coming up to me and say, boy, I wish I had a work week that was similar to town employees. So the perception was out there that, you know, they thought that people should be at the town hall five days a week. And um, I kind of like uh the setup. Um, I was going to bring in Thursday with the banks open, that Thursday might be the better day to stay open till five o'clock. And my question now with this is, since we've signed the union contract. Uh, with the employees of the clerical union, um, can we renege on that contract? And change it because we just signed one for, what was it, three years? And what was in that contract at the time we signed is what is the ongoing schedule now?
It is, Joe, but it, right, it it's an excellent question. First of all, you and I also experienced some of that feedback too at the Maple Grove Civic. That was one of my first experiences, and there was a lot of questions about that. It's always been been on my mind. Uh, an experience I had where I we were, I was asked why a four day work week, and I think I'd been on the job about twenty-seven days at that point. Um, yes, good question about the contract. No, it it only opens it up to bargain or negotiate on this particular issue alone. Uh, so that's what the labor attorney told me. I did have a very early preliminary conversation with the union rep out of Worcester. She's actually going to be in town. Uh, next Wednesday, uh, talk about just to to come in and and say, I see how things are going, resolve maybe a couple other issues that that we have. So I'll speak about it with her, but Labor Council will guide me through it. We'll only bargain this particular issue, will not affect. Any other aspect of the contract such as wages or or anything like that. And and as I said, uh, within the the agreement, and I I'll certainly photocopy the page and send it to everybody. But it does take into, um, you know, from an employee standpoint, they've been earning time earned at four days a work week versus now it would be four point five. So we look at that provision, and that's what it, that's about the only thing I think we'll we'll get down to. And from a bargaining standpoint, I don't want to say too much for union members who may be, you know, watching tonight and tip our hand. But you know, there's some things in there that we can, we can take a look at and um and and go from there. And and if, and I'll report back to the board if we think that. Uh, it's not going too well, we very simply say, we withdraw, we're not going to do it, and we go back to the the drawing board.
So i- as far as legalities, you can rebargain units of the contract? During the life of the contract?
Yes, in certain circumstances. That's called impact.
Okay, yep. All right, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Um. And I I guess I'll add my opinion. Um, I I too, I think, was uh. Called out in the Maple Grove Civic Club meeting after uh about two months being elected. Um, and there were some strong opinions about uh four days versus five days. Um, so happy to see that this is i- in front of us to at least talk about. Um, you know, having heard some discussion and hearing some unknowns that are still out there. Um, you know, about what those hours and the days might look like, you know, I I don't know if we're at a point where we could. Necessarily go with the four and a half days at this point and and vote on that. That's just my opinion. But um, I'd love to give Jay some feedback in the form of um some guidance. If this is something that we should continue to move forward, um, and if. And to bring back to the Board of Selectmen with um bargaining uh proposal, et cetera. So I don't know how the board feels or if there's a motion that anyone wants to make um with regard to this item.
Uh, no motion for me. I just would like to send it back to Jay and to, because he still needs to work with the clerical union. Um, to ensure that we can, we can do this, and it's all gonna, you know, he has other areas probably to look into also to finalize. So I, as per Jay's suggestion, I would uh uh wait for him to come back again. But you know, I think he knows at least our opinions and to begin to work towards a solution, to a final solution to this. Um, just to add, back in two thousand and sixteen, that. Um, employers were beginning to change employee schedules. Um, you know, the changing workforce, the baby boomers kind of getting up there and the uh the next generation. Um, trying to work with them who had, you know, who liked to work from home, you know, very tech savvy. Um, so where I work, we want to, I have every Fri- every other Friday off, you know, but I don't serve the community. Um, but I have, you know, my my uh schedule changed. We were given, you know, comp time. You got a disappointment in the morning, you make up the time at the end of the day, and it was all fine. And that helps bring in employees to Berkshire County and and it helps keep them there. So times have changed, you know, and and uh and at the time, people were working from home. Um, if they were, you know, if they had some illness or whatever reason it may be, it it, you know. It it pretty much working to work with the employees to help them, which best fits for them in in their employment. Um, because we want to keep the best people. Um, so that was kind of discussed then too. So again, I, you know, the the town employees working four days a week, I also have a benefit too. Where I work, you know, there's over a thousand of us that work there in Pittsfield, so, you know, that's the way it was going. And then pandemic, yeah, and now. A lot of us are home all the time. Um, so, but that was kind of some of the discussion back then too. Um, so I don't want, you know, you know, times change. We got to continue to work with our employees and there's that, you know. Um, we have to replace the baby boomers and we want to keep the best people, and sometimes we have, you know, you try to work with everyone to make sure it works to their. When they have children and when they, you know, we we try to do everything we can to work with everyone. To make sure that the job that they have is, you know, is a position they they enjoy and they want to, again, stay in our community and be part of our community. So we have to adjust as we go, but um that's really a town administrator, uh, that's his job to do that, so. Um, yeah, no motion for me. Just uh want the town administrator to continue to look into this. And to come back with a a final uh wrapped up solution that that will work.
Hey, Jay, I think you're hearing consensus that you're on the right path, and we look forward to seeing something that a future.
Yes, thank you. That that was good feedback, very clear. Um, I I just, you know, I I want to relay also to all of our, you know, staff too, that obviously this is not. I feel like to a certain extent, I'm shooting my own, you know, foot because I'm one of the guys that enjoys the quiet office on on Fridays, but I've also a public employee. Um, I'm a municipal employee, and we have a higher calling sometimes to service, and I certainly uh represent the interest of the select board. So you've also made very clear to that, so I do understand it. Uh, but it's not anything that'll happen tomorrow. Uh, we have a lot of change happening uh within municipal government, retirements, et cetera. We're still in the middle of the health pandemic. Uh, a lot of us are are spread thin, et et cetera, and uh. So we'll we'll get this on the, put this in the in the pipeline, and we'll continue to to work it through. And now I'll report back to the board at some point. This gives me good direction uh in anticipation, being able to speak with the union on on Wednesday. In our labor council about what steps are are next, because really, at the end of the day, that's. Uh, there's a couple offices too, like the assessor's offices, two part-time employees. We're gonna have to work through some of this stuff. Nothing in municipal government is necessarily always the round, you know, peg within the in the round hole. Sometimes we got to twist it a little bit, so. No, thank you for the feedback. We'll uh, we'll continue working the issue.
Um, I have just one more comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, w- we were never made known that even though a town office. Or a town hall is uh closed, that the heat has to stay on at sixty-eight degrees. Now, is that a state law or is that a a law that was in effect for the town of Adams Town Hall? Is it mass general law that all town halls that are inhabited with employees need to keep? The building heated at sixty-eight degrees because if that's the case, that was never made known to us in two thousand and sixteen.
No, I I I think, Joe, what the conversation in two thousand and sixteen was, I think everyone acted in good faith in in two thousand and sixteen. The distinction is. It's it's not specific for municipal buildings. We're considered an office building. So the code of Massachusetts regulations, the state sanitary code. Um, says that a building has to be heated just like a house to a certain, you know, temperature. So it might actually be seventy degrees. I I'm not, I don't remember exactly what. Temperature Jerry said. The point being is this, I think in two thousand and sixteen, the concept was the building would be entirely closed. No town clerk, no treasurer, no town administrator, no one at all. Which would then legally allow the building temperature to drop to fifty, fifty-five, whatever good, you know, facility, you know, guide point is. In the, in my two years that I've been there, there's been actually very few Fridays where even I've been in the building and no one else has been there. I'm there, Haley is there, Kelly is there, someone else is there. Robert is there now as D P W director. Um, people, you know, certain people knew that I was in the office uh from from P D or from D P W. They would come, they'd see my car. You know, they had a key, they would come in the building. So I think the intent in two thousand and sixteen was, let's just completely close down the building, we'll lower the heat, et cetera. In practice, what has happened is inevitably is at least one or two people in the building. And even though we may have had the temperature, you know, set low, you know, inevitably someone's in the building and we just got to the point. And Haley, I don't remember if you remember where it was, but we finally said inevitably one of us is in the building, and we have the building, you know, it's all mechanized. We have it's computerized. The building is automatically heated anyway, assuming someone is there. So i- it in good faith, I certainly think somebody said, hey, we can save money if we do this. It, and the board acted on that in good faith, and that's not an untrue. It, and the board acted on that in good faith and that's not an untrue statement. It's just in practice, we're not really saving money because someone's in the building and we have to heat it. To, you know, I wear a vest all the time, not because it's the Berkshire uniform, but because I get chilly in my office sometimes. She's an old building. Also, you know, on top of that too, we've changed all the light bulbs in almost all of our municipal buildings to LED. So we could leave our lights on in that building and and we would see a very little uptick at all in our electricity costs because we're actually pretty, pretty efficient. So that, that's just the the background on that.
Okay, all right. I just uh, wasn't aware that there was such a code or mass general law. So the town hall is considered an office space. And that's different than uh, a town hall or a city hall.
I don't, I don't think that code would makes a distinction between the two. I think for code enforcement purposes, we're treated as a as an office building. So if it's occupied, it has to meet a certain temperature. It's the same thing with, like a residence, there's a residence requirement too. So if you're a landlord, you have to offer, you know, you have to make sure your heat can at least get the, get the residence up to a certain temp. That's the the reg.
Okay, that's all.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we'll move on to department reports. Uh, Jay, you're up first.
Sure, thanks, everybody. First thing is, I can uh, tell the board that we were bombed by a heart bomber. I think everybody, you know, saw that. Uh, Jack, thank you for reaching out to me for a a quick story about it. And I know News Ten in Albany uh, covered it. We've received a lot of positive feedback. It is absolutely fantastic and to whomever arranged that, put in the time and the effort, thank you. Uh, just what a, it it was great. I received a lot of text messages, a lot of photos, uh, wanted to know if we had anything to do with it. It it's been great. Uh, that shows the the community uh, spirit and I think it's fantastic. So whoever did that, thank you uh, for doing that. That's kind of been the highlight of the last uh, last few days. As always, I'm gonna shift immediately into something just a a little bit more serious and that's uh, an update on how we're handling our health pandemic. As you know, Adams is still in the red. Uh, other communities are starting to drop to yellow. So uh, we're not exactly sure why we're we're staying in the red, but if you look at how that number is is calculated, you'll see that it's a a certain number of cases that have reported positive over a certain period of time based on the total population. So at the end of the day, it's just a data figure. There's also still a lag in the data being reported. So we may be in the red for empirical data uh, information, but in reality, we we might be only one or two away from actually dropping to to yellow. We'll continue to monitor that, but but it is how the DPH monitors things, so we have to act appropriately. But the overall numbers in the state are dropping uh, slightly. And we hope to be able to see that that through. Of course, that number guides how the school district works. It guides what we do uh, for town offices, you know, et et cetera. And it certainly guides uh, folks that are making decisions to whether or not they want to go into a local establishment eat. So we'll continue to monitor it. Dr. Rhodes, I haven't chatted with Dr. Rhodes in 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 a little bit of time, but the last time I did, there's no, there's no one empirical trace to this. It's not one person going to a particular establishment, business or restaurant. A lot of it had been at least two weeks ago, three weeks ago, had simply been independent uh, contamination from group gatherings, et et cetera. So I just urge everyone, please be cautious. Please socially distance where possible. Please continue to to wear your mask. And and be aware that it, this can affect our local businesses. You may be less inclined to go to a local establishment if the community is in the red. So at the end of the day, your personal choice does affect everybody. And I think it's important to make that, make that point. On the brighter side of the COVID vaccine uh, issue, if there is one, is uh, the governor has at least now three times, once last week, Lieutenant Governor mentioned it in the conference call I was on. And although I didn't, didn't have an opportunity to watch it today, I was in meetings for the majority of the day. It's my understanding, the governor again did call out the Berkshires as a region. We're doing very well in terms of vaccinating our population, following the state guidelines in terms of the eligibility. I have now volunteered, I think, for all but two of the vaccination clinics being held at St. Elizabeth's in North Adams. Uh, I think it's important for everyone to know that is a regional vaccination center. It is catering really to the eight northern Berkshire communities, of which Adams is obviously a part of. North Adam staff is there, Adam staff, Cheshire is there, Clarksburg is there, Williamstown is there. We are all pitching in to to do that and to offer it. And it's, the model is working. Identical model in Great Barrington, identical model in Pittsfield. Really, that's something to be proud of in terms of regional effort. I would really like to thank tonight Madam Clerk Haley is is one of the individuals who we worked with at the, at the clinic. Christine Hoyt has been there, uh, Dr. Hoyt on the the Board of Health has been there. And in particular, our Council on Aging staff. You've read the paper, I don't need to to rehash what's happening, but you know, it's, it's sometimes difficult to reach our population who's over the age of seventy five with a very modern and very technical and also somewhat intimidating process to become vaccinated. Erica, Liz and Barbara have done a fantastic job. One of our clinics, they worked an entire eight hour day plus registering people and then immediately went to the clinic and was there until ten o'clock with, you know, with me. They've done a fantastic job. We've had our van service, the Adams Council on Aging, our, we've been running our vans. Make, picking people up. We've run the Fallon car, the small Nissan. We've been running that. We've been doing uh, appointments. We've been helping to register people uh, for their second dose because it's intimidating. I've had the opportunity, it's almost like uh, the transfer station experience or town meeting. We've run into a lot of people from town. Uh, we've been able to have a lot of nice conversations and they've all expressed uh, their comfort at seeing frankly, local officials from from the town or folks that they know from town helping out, has brought down their uh, their anxiety level with it. So I think I speak for all of us when I say, thank you all for for volunteering your your time. They're long days, they're tiring days. And particularly thanks to the Council on Aging Staff who's not only volunteered at the clinic, but have also helped, you know, register that. So we're, we're doing, I think, a a pretty good job there. If anyone who's watching does want to know how, and they're just intimidated by the process, and that's totally understandable. Call the Council on Aging, speak with Barbara, Liz or Erica. They will walk you through the process. We will send that van to get you. We will send that car to get you. Uh, I haven't asked Erica this, but I actually heard that she went and picked somebody up herself. Chief Kelly has participated as well. So we're really all hands on deck with this. And I, as I've said all the time, I really appreciate the board's support and and allowing me to leave the office and 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 represent the the town up there. It it's been very rewarding uh, to participate with our our sister communities and and see our residents coming through and get vaccinated uh, with it. We're about fifty percent through, sixty percent through, give or take, the estimated over seventy five population in the Berkshires. The governor today announced at noon that he was expanding the eligibility now to those sixty five or older uh, or individuals with certain core morbidities. I don't think we're gonna go through those tonight. But uh, Christine, if you want to go through at some point when you make your announcements, I know you have it written down. I I didn't write it down. But uh, go to the Max Gov site. And I believe the site is Berkshire Vaccination. Is that what it is? I always forget. I can never.
Yeah, the easiest uh, website would be getvaccinatedberkshires.org. That is being run by the Berkshire County Boards of Health Collaborative. Um, and they've done a really nice job of simplifying the state's website and information. There's a large green button actually on the screen behind me that says make an appointment and it brings you to the Berkshire County sites. So it's a little bit easier to navigate that site. So it's getvaccinatedberkshires.org.
So we anticipate now doing this, this next uh, round. Uh, we're vaccinating on average anywhere from five hundred to seven hundred people uh, on average at about an eight hour, seven hour clinic. Uh, we are going to probably try to increase that throughput upwards of one thousand at some point. We have five lanes. We've also done both Pfizer and Moderna at the same time. Northern Berkshire emergent, uh, excuse me, Northern Berkshire EMS Emergency Medical Services. What a group. So we're, that is really at this point, I think, what the tip of the sword is in this battle against COVID, in addition to what everybody else, how they can conduct themselves with the mask. Uh, to me, this is what we're, more people who get vaccinated, uh, the sooner we'll be out of this uh, as it is. So that's, that's really the latest update that I can give you with uh, that information. But for our local residents who may be watching, call the Council on Aging at this point. And the three of them will certainly help you walk through the process. Shifting gears a little bit, uh, we have a retirement coming up at the end of this month. A quasi-retirement is what I I should say. Is our longstanding town accountant, Mary Beverly, is due to retire at the end of the month. She'll be on vacation for a few weeks. I'll certainly still be in touch with her. She's gonna spend still some time at at Town Hall. And I'll have some information uh, for the board, probably by the end of the week. Uh, about the next step in in Mary's replacement. I'll inform the board then. We'll have a ratification for you probably at the next, next meeting. We just have some some logistics to to work out. Uh, but Mary will be retiring at the end of February. That kind of can't talk about Mary without talking about the budget. So uh, Mary and I are on top of this. We have a first pass done with Personnel Services. By the end of this week, uh, I've asked all department heads to have their operating, level funded operating costs provided in the municipal system. So we'll be able to take a first pass at 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 uh, operating budget subcommittee members. Once I have that data, we will schedule a budget subcommittee meeting. And we'll take a look at it. The capital, uh, you know, the capital, I've also asked department heads, take a look at what your CIP requests are for the year. However, that's really dependent upon what our free cash number is. We haven't gotten that number yet. I can tell you right now, it's gonna be lower than probably what we've had last three or four years. So our our capitalists probably be tight. But that's the the one loose end. It's always the one loose end because it's always the last piece to put together. But the personnel and the operating are most expensive. So John and Christine, I'll be in touch about about that. Also, John is a member of the Public Safety Subcommittee. Uh, I think Chief Kelly's got his feet wet. We had some really good budgetary conversations uh, today. And about some, some staffing issues uh, with the police station and and got him up to speed on some issues. So I think we're, we're close to that uh, as well. I know you'd asked me at one point. So we'll probably do a a public safety subcommittee meeting too in the next week or two uh, as well on that. Uh, myself and Chairman Hoyt will have a meeting, I believe, uh, tomorrow uh, with Who's a Valley School District uh, Budget Manager and Superintendent. We'll have a chat with them uh, about the Who's a Valley Budget uh, as well. And uh, I know Mayor Bernard and I have also spoken about a joint meeting along with the other uh, member communities of the vocational school district. Uh, and we'll have a meeting with Superintendent Brosnan uh, about that as well. So we're, we're starting that that process. Last piece I have for everybody. It's gonna snow again. We've got a snow emergency, I believe, going into effect tomorrow night at midnight through Friday midnight. Uh, DPW has been, um, we hit Park Street, we hit Summer Street. Uh, well, with some of the other narrow streets from moving the snow just in time for for some more. In terms of the parking uh, aspect of it, we haven't received any significant negative feedback uh, about it. You know, that's fifty fifty as well. You you're never gonna make everybody, you know, happy with it. Uh, but I know that the police have certainly uh, stepped up a little bit more than they have previously and are helping DPW to en- enforce it. Chief Kelly is aware of the debate. I brought him up to speed. I told him this was still a test year. We could still reverse it if need be. So he's also paying attention to it for us uh, as well. And and make sure that from a safety standpoint, uh, we get any cars out of there that are in the way of the DPW. I think in terms of my report, Madam Chair, that's uh, all I have for this evening.
Thanks, Jay. Um, any questions for Jay? John?
Sometimes it's benefit to have a small community. Very pleased with the response of our Adams Council on Aging to assisting our elderly population in working for scheduled appointments. There's a lot of people have called, been on the internet. Some don't have internet. Some have used their family to help them, but a phone call to the Council on Aging and and they make it happen. So uh, very pleased with the, with that group and thank both of you, the Chair and the and Jay and all the other town staff who have volunteered um, to support the clinics in North Adams. Definitely, it is good to see um, officials from our communities all working together. It's just a great thing to see.
You know, John, I I should add to that, that first week uh, seeing it, you know, Deb's on it, just I saw Deb's name right there and it dawned on me. That that first week that we were told we had seventy five, we had vaccine available for over seventy five. Council on Aging was bombarded with calls and they were doing their best. Uh, I sent out an email to all town staff to ask to assist Council on Aging. And in a matter of, I would say probably twenty to thirty minutes, I know Deb registered a bunch of people. Uh, the treasurer's office, e- everybody was just pitching in. Haley's office was just pitching in to get this done uh, for people. So I was very proud of of all of our staff who just stepped up almost on a wartime footing to say, we need to do this and we're just gonna do it. We're just gonna get it done. So.
Great. Uh, Jay, anything on the um, Route Eight construction or the Town Common? I know we still, there still hasn't been a Susan B. Anthony ceremony. I've seen some discussion on that recently, but sorry, any, any updates? I see that the uh, gazebo is is at least partially built. Which is a good thing. So uh, any, any updates in that area, Tom? The McDonald's has been renovated, which is a great thing for our community, for them to invest money back into our community and plan on staying here. So it was great to see McDonald's, uh, the updates of, to that business also.
Yeah, no, nothing specific, John. Gazebo, I don't know if the gazebo's done or not yet, but but that was one of the last pieces. I know that there's concerns that that Becky Ferguson in Community Development and and uh, Steve Scrocky from DPW mentioned about the the take uh, for the uh, the lawn as to whether or not that that grass seed, you know, is gonna take because it was put down later in the year. So that needs to be monitored. I'm pretty sure the contractor is aware of that. I I would think that at this point with people being vaccinated, we know it's safe to be outside. We can probably assume that when the weather breaks at some point, when the board would like, and we could certainly have a another conversation about this at at some point. We can certainly put together some type of of dedication. We have to have it. It's a question of when can we do it appropriately, really to recognize the folks that that worked on the ASC. Uh, to make that happen, uh, and really to celebrate, you know, Susan B. and and what she means, uh, especially now in this, this day and age. You know, et cetera. So yes, we definitely want to do something, what that looks like. I would imagine at this point, outdoor event, spread out at the common. And we take some time and and see who we can invite uh, to to speak about it. That, that's about as far as we've, we've gotten with it. Route Eight specifically, the road project. Some days they're, they're doing what they can based on on weather, but we're not behind schedule as far as I know, moving ahead. I've had a couple of uh, new property owners that that weren't well versed on exactly what was happening along Route Eight. So Becky had a uh, speak with them. Again, can't make everybody uh, happy, but uh, some of these are mass highway design guidelines that we have to deal with uh, for it. And we're on track and and on schedule. We have, we still have a lot of work going on.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, any questions for Jay?
Yes, uh, I have a few. Um, I was a little disappointed um, with all the work that you you have done and the board talking to people about the necessary things they should do to stop the spread of COVID to see that we've ended up in the red category. Um, I don't know anything we've could have done differently to uh, change the tide, but um, to see us in the red personally disappointed me a little bit and that's nothing a reflection on any of us, but it's just people have to take this seriously. And now it's just been found that the West African strain has been found in Massachusetts, which is highly contagious and may make vaccines still relevant, but may need to put boosters or other things to make the uh, vaccine uh, doable. And another thing that was a little troublesome to me was um, when I received the email uh, about times when you could work down St. Elizabeth of Hungry Church to help out. I received the email with the dates and already members of, and you know who you were, your names were already on a schedule. So in other words, you had privy to the information before I did. And by the time I was able to amend my schedule to find out, I was told when I called that I, we don't really need anybody else because we have so many people here. So, you know, what I like best is helping individuals, not just it's in my role as a selectman, but just as a person in the community at large. So I just thought that, you know, that email shouldn't have had anybody's names on, on it when you're sending it out and uh, with the schedule of dates and people's names were already on them. So that, and but I want to thank you for, you Christine, um, Dr. Hoy and those that were on the list for helping out the people of. Of our community and I hope you continue that good work. Another thing, I have a few questions. I noticed that we have a new police vehicle. Now, was that money appropriated through town meeting for that white? New police vehicle?
It's not new. It was, I'm actually, I've chuckled to hear you say that. I'm glad to hear you say that, Joe. It means that the guys did a great job. That was actually. The last. Blue, white in blue marked police unit. It was Cruiser forty-six. That is now the new chief's vehicle. The previous chief's vehicle was a Ford Escape. It was white. That had a cracked frame. I make fun of Troy Bacon anytime that he and I catch up and tell him that he broke my car. But the frame broke. It gave away just due to age and rust on it. Rather than buying a new vehicle. We had a sergeant's meeting right before Chief Bacon left. And Sergeant Hicks, our brand new sergeant, recommended that, why don't we just clean that car up, make that the chief's vehicle? And then we pursue a new frontline, black and white in the budget cycle. And I completely agreed with Sergeant Hicks' recommendation. That's what we did. So that's former Car forty-six, now the chief's car. And when we put our budget together this year, we'll be putting in a capital item request for a brand new black and white to replace it.
Okay, so that car never had markings on it?
It did. It had the blue markings on the side that said Adams Police on it, Car forty-six. I think the last time it was probably out and about was Halloween evening. I rode in that car with Chief Bacon. On Halloween night and then that car is also was used for sending police officers to the police academies, used for details. Things like that. So it's been renow purposed as the chief's car, no additional cost to the town. But at this point, rather than buying a chief's car, that only the chief would drive and use for limited occasions, we all felt it was a smarter, more efficient move. To put that money into a frontline, black and white cruiser, which Chief Kelly agrees with. So you'll probably see that in the fiscal twenty-two budget this year.
Okay, and lastly, I've been asking. About getting a log from Kimberly Whittick, our meter patrol person. And our animal control officer. I really enjoy getting those and I want to thank you, Jay, for your consistency now. On sending out a little notes of what the week had for us. And it's been very good for me because I like to know what's going on and that's satisfied my needs. So I want to thank you. But I was hoping that you could talk to the chief and see once again if. At least personally, I would like to see the log of what Kim's doing. It shows me that, you know. What she's doing, how she's doing it, where she is and. And a question I'll have in the future is, I would like to know how we're doing with our meter. With our ticketing and our income, because I have noticed when I was getting the reports that, you know, Kim was. Giving some tickets. So that's something I'd like to know in the future. And lastly, I just said lastly before, but Member Duval brought up the Susan B. Anthony celebration. And being on that committee, I think we're very eager as a group to have the town. Set a date. I think a lot of us on this committee were no longer a committee in standing. And I think we'd like to put this project to bed because it's still a part of us. And one thing that also needs to be known that during this celebration. There has to be fireworks because that was part of one of our donation. Requirements. We went out personally and asked for bunnies toward fireworks and people were very obliging. So that's something that needs to go along with the celebration.
All right, thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
All right, so we will move on to Town Council's report.
So since my last report, I performed work on the following. I received and responded to a public records request that was submitted to the town clerk. In doing so, I asked town staff to determine how many hours would be needed to comply with the request and the costs of copies. And I should add to that, when that was presented to the recruiter, she withdrew her request. I reviewed and advised the Board of Health regarding a request concerning an executive session matter at its last meeting. I responded to a request from the code enforcement officer and a property owner regarding a health issue involving the property owner and his tenant. I responded to a property owner's request concerning an abandoned property. And not showing up on your report as I attended a portion of today's Board of Health meeting.
Any questions for Town Council? John, I'll start with you.
Just one brief question. Anything new on the. Curtis Fine Paper Property? Is that still in the same position it was?
I've checked with, I recently checked with the Land Corps and they're still reviewing matters. I cannot account for the delay that that they're experiencing. I'm not making excuses for them. I can't account for it.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Joe, any questions for Town Council?
Yes, John's question and my question is toward the mobile station. Has there been any movement in negotiations for that parcel?
Well, I'm not privy to the parts that deal with the hazardous waste remediation issues. That would be something that maybe Jay has more information on. I drafted, quite a while ago, I drafted a purchase and sale agreement. But a lot of that is hinging on the results of the hazardous waste inspection that's going on. Donna Seasons spoke about that a couple of weeks.
That's correct. That's what I was going to say. Okay, thank you.
We talked about mobile station today, Ed and Joe and Donna. Ed, I think she's going to end up reaching out to you because I think she might be ready to incorporate some of those provisions in the PNS. That was the latest today.
Anything else for Town Council? Thanks, Ed.
You're welcome.
That brings us to Subcommittee and Liaison Reports. John?
Well, Jay has brought up already the Budget Subcommittee Discussion. Every time this. Part of the year, I started to get that out of my mind that we got to get the budget going because we do have a schedule to meet. Good to hear you're going to meet with the school district and also that towns, you're looking for a level funded inputs from your. Staff. So it's. So that's probably something good to pass on to the schools. That's, you know, not going to be a great budget season. I know that. President has some kind of a. Well, as part of his bill that he's trying to push through and some funding going to the states and hopefully pushed out to us. But no one knows at this time what that may be or so. So I'm glad to see Jay that it's been work, you and Mary, and we'll be meeting soon. The other question I have is in regards to the Parks and Recreation. Committee discussion there and we've got, you know, assuming the. The local youth leagues will be, I'm sure, going to the Parks and Rec. Committee to, to go over, you know, the schedules, but also, you know, the COVID restrictions, which. They're still going to face this spring. And the statements made there, I want to make sure that all leagues, there's no, you know. All leagues will be respected and given the same, you know, based on. You know, restrictions from our code enforcement officer, but all leagues will be considered and we will do everything we can to ensure that they can. Play again, based on the Board of Health's decisions and the state ranking there. I'm kind of saying things a little general here, but it's just been things I've been reading. I want to make sure that, you know. We treat every league fairly, equally. And also we have the restrictions which they will have to work through and put in a plan, but. I just want to make sure that all the leagues understand that, youth leagues.
Sure. John, DPW Director Tober is on the call. Did you have any specific questions for him? I know that he staffs the Parks Commission meetings, so he might be able to address anything if you wanted to ask him. He's on the call. Or Robert, if you wanted to state anything about how the Parks Commission will ensure that there's. Equal opportunities for all of the leagues. And that they would be in compliance.
I can't say anything about the compliance factor. That would be a Board of Health and Mark. And as far as playing and field usage, we are in discussions of that right now. In particular for Russell Field because it's a new field. We have talked about different aspects of that and what we want to do with that field to. Preserve its, you know, its new state. And so we are in discussions with that. We have a next meeting, March eighth at six o'clock. And we have a number of attendees that will be joining us from the Housa Valley Schools. As well as some members of the league, the youth football league, Mike Mitchell will be joining us. So we are in discussions for that as far as usage.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, John, for Subcommittee Liaison?
I'm all set right now. Thanks.
Okay, Joe?
Yes, we had a Mohawk Trail Woodlands Partnership Executive Committee Meeting. And what came out of that is the following. We've. We have working now with an administrator who's overseeing the way we're doing things. It's the New England Forest Foundation. They have a young woman who is helping us along. To manage us as far as meetings and to take care of the ins and outs of the Woodlands Partnership. We've broken ties with both Tom Asuko at Northern Berkshire Regional Planning. And Peggy Sloan from Franklin County Council of Governments. They were both very instrumental in getting. Legislation together and getting us to the point where we are now. So we are going to kind of be like a bird, let go and start to flap our wings. As I think I mentioned some time ago, the chairman of the Mohawk Trail Woodlands Partnership is Henry R. He's a professor emeritus from Williams College in environmental science. Very knowledgeable and astute individual. He is chairing our committee. We are going to have a meeting of the full board on February twenty-third. And the agenda can be seen on the town website. There is going to be some talk about the. Mass Vulnerability Program having to do with Adams and Williamstown. Adams was the first really to get going on that and the first to complete all that was necessary to be sanctioned. As a community that went through the processes. And lastly, one of the first things that we're going to be doing to. Complete our mission is we're going to be broken down into committees, subcommittees. And there is as follows, there'll be a Finance and Budgeting Committee. There'll be a Forest Land Conservation Committee. There'll be a Natural Resource Based Economic Development Committee. There'll be an Education Outreach and Research Committee and there'll be a Municipal Financial Sustainability Committee. So now that we're on our own and in partnership with the federal government and the new administration. We're hoping very much that we can get this program up and running. And make it a valuable asset to the twenty-one communities, although there are right now only seventeen communities. Interested, but we do have another community that wants to come on board and our bylaws are going to see if we're going to be able to allow them to do so. So I'm looking forward to moving on. It's a good group and I hope that we can have some. Real creative ideas because this is a novel program. It's one of the. Probably the only one in the country. So the Forest Service really wanted to jump on board so they can be part of it. And it's not going to be a land grab. I think a lot of people think that because the Forest Service, the feds are getting into it. There's not going to be any sale of any properties to the federal government. They're just in it with us. To guide us and to give us technical direction and technical help in our. As we make our way forward. So that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you so much, Joe. I appreciate that update. And you said it was February twenty-third is your next meeting?
Yes, that's, it's virtual. It's six to eight and it's already on the. Home website, the Adams website.
Excellent. All right, thank you. For myself, I just have a couple of updates that are coming from the Housa Valley School Committee. So I did want to mention to folks, if you weren't aware, Dr. Bush did resign from his position. On the school committee. The position was posted and Erin Milney, Adams resident. You might be familiar with the work that she had done on the regional school district agreement. She applied, was interviewed. I believe there were seventy-plus people on that Zoom call that she interviewed in front of for that process, but she has been appointed. And sworn in as an Adams representative on the school committee. So there has been a change in that seat and I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. And I wanted to thank Dr. Bush for his service. I also just wanted to mention, I know that Jay in his report talked about how the data. You know, affects a lot of decisions. And he did allude to the fact that one of the decisions that is being affected by the data. From the different communities is that of the school and going back full time in person, et cetera. There have been some inquiries I know that I've received from residents and some town employees have received some inquiries from residents. Asking for the school district to return to in-person learning. I will share with you that the chairman of the school committee did reach out and wanted to reassure. This board that they, the school committee and the superintendent have been proceeding in unison. And in a reasonable manner that best represents the whole of the district. They're trying to remain in a hybrid model of learning as much as possible and when safe. They're in the process of opening up negotiations with the teachers' union in an effort to make decisions based on current and ever-changing parameters. As everyone continues to learn more about COVID nineteen. So I wanted to assure the board that the school committee and the superintendent are working together in unison. They do communicate. With our town administrator and myself on a regular basis, just about in-person hybrid, fully remote. In the decisions that are being made. They have implemented a committee that is looking at all of this. And they've had robust participation from families within the district at each of their school committee meetings. As I mentioned, one of the last meetings with over seventy people in attendance virtually. To listen to concerns, to hear families out. I know that this is difficult. But I do have faith that they are all acting. In good faith with good information to keep everyone safe. So I was asked to pass that along to the board. And I think that is it for me for Subcommittee and Liaison Reports. So I will move to announcements in good order and John, I will start with you.
All set.
Joe, anything for announcements?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. I'd like to dovetail. Yeah, I just have a couple of things. I'd like to dovetail on what um you just mentioned, Christine, about um getting the kids back to school. Studies are starting to show that young children are really being affected by the lack of uh social interacting interaction amongst other kids. Well, I I guess it's certainly nothing that I can't mention, but um I at St. Stanislaus uh school uh as a janitor uh through money from the PPE program. And it is great to see, we've been fortunate to be able to have uh the children there five days a week since the beginning of school. And it it warms my heart to just see these young children interacting. And I think back when I was a youngster and to think of these young children that are, you know, doing things virtually or hybrid, i- it's very difficult on the families themselves for working purposes, trying to find people to watch their children. And so I'm hoping too that in time, um I know that our president is hoping to get all the kids back into elementary school. It appears that the spread of COVID is less distinct amongst amongst younger children. So um I'm hoping that that be the case because they need to be around other children. And my other question uh or announcement is, uh where do we stand on Jay's review? The last I knew it was Labor Council. How does the Labor Council fit into why we need to be with, I believe that's the term you mentioned, Christine, was the Labor Council. And that was about a month ago. So where do we stand on Jay's review? I think it's only fair that we put this behind us because I remember you saying that, you know, what we gave, when we gave our uh recap of which you passed out, you said, well, all of this is going to, you know, be maintained or will count on its review up to, I I'm not sure what date, but it was well past the one year that we usually, um you know, since I've been on the board and we've had to, you know, rate or review our town administrator. It doesn't seem like it it it's been so difficult and elongated type of process.
So sure, um Joe, there actually wasn't a process in place um for the town. It hadn't been done in quite some time. Um so a process had to be created. I did reach out to MMA um for some guidance on that. They actually didn't have any. I know that uh I think member Duval was also on the same MMA uh workshop call for selectmen in January, uh where the discussion was about uh evaluations and how there really isn't a process. But that it is a very unique um situation because you do have to comply with open meeting laws. So yes, the evaluation form went out in October. The last of the evaluations were collected in December. The um I've been working with Labor Council to make sure that there's a composite from all of, I was not able to um compile all of that information. We did have to find a town employee that could compile that information, put it into a composite document. That composite document has to be um reduced even further um to comply with open meeting laws. And that is what I am working with um town council on. Um and it looks like Joe has um left the meeting. So I will just continue to just share with everybody that that is where uh things sit. It is with Labor Council to help make sure that uh the document that is drafted is done so, meeting the tenants of the open meeting law. And then is presented accordingly. It is my hope to do that uh soon. And because it has taken so much time, I'm also hoping that Labor Council can help me address because the evaluation did indicate a a time period of up until, I think, last April. And then there was a section on the evaluation to also evaluate from April until the time that people filled it out. It is my hope that Labor Council can help address whether we could um make this evaluation good for the two years and not have to do this uh again in May to to make sure that we're on target. So right now, it's been a matter of establishing a process and making sure that I follow the laws. So um Jay, my apologies, my sincerest apologies that this has been dragged out and is taking as much time. Um I think you know that this is something that um I've been very careful with. I don't wanna put the town in a position where we've done something uh wrong. So. I'm happy to answer any other questions on that, but it seems that the person who asked is in no longer on the call. Okay, so uh my other um announcement would be.
Hi, uh this is uh Joe again. I'm sorry. I don't know. Something just happened and so I I apologize. I'm calling back in to go help with the adjournment.
Okay, yep. So we're uh still on announcements and good of the order. So I was just moving on to um announcing that I know that um Jay mentioned that the uh Baker-Palito administration did uh open up eligibility for uh vaccinations for the 65 and older crowd. That starts at 8:00 AM tomorrow. So if anybody goes to get vaccinated berkshires.org tonight and hits the make an appointment button, um you will see that the Berkshire sites are listed there. It might say zero appointments available. That's because those appointments are going to be um loaded into uh Prep Mod, that is the system that they use, at 8:00 AM tomorrow. So if you are at home and you have difficulty using a computer, as Jay mentioned, the Council on Aging can help you with that. Their number 743-8333. If the number's busy, if the if they can't get to your call, you can also call the state hotline, which is 211. And they have um people standing by to help people with questions about how to register and they will help you register as well. So those are two avenues that you can use to make sure that you get registered. If you have somebody in your family that um you know is now eligible based on the criteria the governor announced today, and you know that they're not able to do this on their own, please call them tonight. Please get their health insurance information and help walk them through that process in the morning. Um any way we can get our folks vaccinated uh would be fantastic. As Jay mentioned, the um clinics here in the Berkshires have been highlighted by the governor on a number of occasions, stating that the regional approach that the Berk- Berkshires have taken um is a model that should be followed throughout the state. And one of the things that he was pretty proud to mention, um and it doesn't sound like it's a really high percentage number, but the Berkshires right now are first in the state in terms of county as to how many of our residents we have already vaccinated with one dose. So we are just over 15% of our population that have at least received one dose of the vaccine. Um and that is higher than any other county in the state. And they're gonna continue to monitor the data and they'll put that out on the Thursdays with their public information data that they post um on mass.gov. So please be checking for that. Um there's uh fantastic work that is being done. The organizers are given probably about an hour's notice that the governor's gonna open up eligibility to another group of people. And to see the organizers um get together from all three clinics and figure out dates to make sure that we are ramping up uh appointments for residents has been incredible to watch and to see them all come together. And as Jay mentioned at the last one, they vaccinated 750 people and they continue uh to to amaze me to see all of the people come through. So again, 8:00 AM tomorrow morning, um those appointments should show up for St. Elizabeth of Hungary, BCC, and then uh the site in Great Barrington. And I think that the North Adams site just added a clinic for this Saturday, so that would be February 20th. That would be the next eligible uh vaccination clinic. And I think they have a few scheduled for next week as well. I think that's all I have for announcements and good of the order.
Christine, may I ask one question? I didn't get in the beginning of this, but um there's underlying health reasons that if you have two, I know one is smoking and uh where can people find a list? Maybe you mentioned it prior to me getting back on the call, but where can the people find a list of uh
Certainly.
underlying ailments or underlying reasons, uh even if they're, you know, uh not at the threshold of age?
Yep, so um they can go to getvaccinatedberkshires.org. Um and that has all of that information. It links uh to the CDC's uh definitions of um what what medical conditions um the state is looking at. Uh so as you mentioned, uh the eligibility is for 65 and older period. And then anyone 16 and older
Right.
who are more of those medical conditions. And there is a long list, so I'm not gonna read them all. But if people go to getvaccinatedberkshires.org, um they'll find that information. And I know that the town posted that information on its Facebook page as well. Um so anyone on social media can find that link and that information.
And I I'm sure that if you go into that category, that you're gonna have to have a note or something from your doctor saying that you do have those uh ailments.
Um I'm not sure. I haven't seen the form.
Okay.
These additions in there. I do know that you have to certify at the end of the um form that everything that you have put in there is true uh to the best of your ability. So you will have to sign off on that if it is found that you are not with those conditions. Um I I do know that the sites can turn you away. So.
Okay, but is that, do you sign that after your vaccination or prior?
You sign it um as you make your appointment, that you
Okay, all right.
For your appointment is true to the best of your ability.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Um so I will uh talk tomorrow to Jay about next week and whether or not we will have a workshop um for next Wednesday. Uh so just be on the lookout for that information, um because that's still up in the air as of right now because I didn't get a chance to touch base with Jay prior to this meeting uh to see what's on the docket. Otherwise, our regularly scheduled meeting will happen on Wednesday, March 3rd at 7:00 PM. So with that, if there's no other business to come before the board of selectmen this evening, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. It is a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine. So we are adjourned at 8:44 PM. I wanna thank all of you um for attending.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.